Bonjour tout le monde. Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order. I know that many people in our community and all of us on City Council are thinking about the people of Turkey and Syria after the devastating earthquake that occurred there earlier this week. So I'd like to pause now, and for those who are able, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Thank you, merci. As we begin our meeting today, I want to acknowledge on behalf of the Ottawa City Council that Ottawa is built on unceded Anishnaabe-Algonquin territory. The peoples of the Anishnaabe-Algonquin Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The city of Ottawa honors the peoples and land of the Anishnaabe-Algonquin Nation, and honors all First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. I'm going to move to the podium now for the next part of our meeting. So I wanted today to thank and recognize Aiden Baker and his family for joining us today, his parents David and Marla. Welcome to you and his grandmother Ricky. As as many of you know, in early December last year, Aiden and another Jewish student were the targets of a hateful antisemitic incident at their high school. This incident was culturally targeted hatred and demonstrates the need to collectively combat antisemitism and hate in all its forms. On January 25th, City Council carried a motion formally denouncing antisemitism in the city of Ottawa and ensured that the city's diversity and anti-racism training include antisemitism moving forward. Proliferating hate and committing targeted attacks must not happen anymore in our community. And I want to say on behalf of my colleagues on Ottawa City Council, Aiden, I stand with you and I applaud your courage in everything you've done and in being here today. Shalom aleichem. And it's now my pleasure to invite Aiden to the podium to say a few words. Aiden, please join us.
Your worship Mayor Sutcliffe and City Councillors, thank you for welcoming me and my family this morning. Doing the right thing is never easy. When faced with hate in my school, I felt that I needed to stand up to it to ensure that it would not happen again. The support that I received from my family, friends, and the community was so overwhelming, and that led to real change happening with the creation of a Jewish Equity Coach position at the OCDSB. If there is anything that we can learn from this incident, it is that you can be any age to affect positive change. Thank you again for welcoming me today and reinforcing the fact that it is always right to stand up to hatred in all forms. Thank you.
I'd now like to ask Aiden's City Councillor, Lane Johnson, and Ariel Troster, who is the only Jewish member of City Council, and also introduce the motion that we passed last month denouncing antisemitism to come forward, and we'll take a quick photo. Thank you again, Aiden, and thank you to Aiden's family for letting him take some time off school to do this. I'm sure that was a that was a struggle to get him to miss some classes for this. But it's great to have you here. All right, let's proceed with the roll call, please.
Councillor Lula.
Present.
Councillor Dudes.
You see.
Councillor Hill.
Here.
Councillor Currie.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Troster.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
You see.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Morning.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor Darus.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor Darush.
Yep.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Councillor Lowe.
Here.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the confirmation of the minutes and the in-camera minutes that were distributed separately of the council meeting on January 5th, 2023. Are the minutes carried?
Carried.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Councillor Johnson.
I, Councillor Lane Johnson, declare a potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest on the following items on the Ottawa City Council Agenda February 8, 2023. Item 8.1, zoning bylaw amendment 535 Chapel Street, as my spouse has a financial relationship with the owner of the property.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson, and Councillor Brockington. I think you wanted to raise a point of privilege on a to clarify a non-conflict, I guess.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I, Riley Brockington, City Councillor, River Ward, rise on a point of personal privilege. At the council meeting of February 23rd, 2022, I declared a potential indirect pecuniary interest on the matter of a temporary closure of Wellington Street between Bang Street and Elgin as I attend St. Andrews Presbyterian Church located at 82 Kent Street at Wellington and serve as an elder of the session, the governing body of the church. I have consulted with the Integrity Commissioner, who advised that I have no pecuniary interest or financial interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and therefore may participate in the discussion and vote on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Brockington. Are there any other declarations of interest? Okay, thank you. There were no regrets received. Next is the motion to introduce reports. Councillor Darus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that the Planning and Housing Committee Report II, Transportation Committee Report I, and the report from the City Clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of January 25th, 2023, be received and considered.
Okay, is the motion carried? Thank you. So we'll move now to item eight on the agenda, and and I'll ask if, as we go through each of these, if you want them held or if we're ready to carry them. So item 8.1 is a zoning bylaw amendment for 535 Chapel Street. Is the motion carried? Item 8.2 is the zoning bylaw amendment for 1525 and 1533 Goth Avenue. I understand there's a technical amendment to that.
Yes, I have a technical amendment seconded by Councillor Bradley, whereas certain reductions and setbacks are required to accommodate the proposed development, and whereas the Planning and Housing Committee amended Document II to reduce the minimum setback of the rear wall of residential buildings from 1.8 meters to 0.6 meters, and whereas the proposed development requires that 1533 Goth Avenue be permitted a 0.6-meter setback from the front wall of residential buildings, and whereas staff did not object to the requested setback, therefore be it resolved that with respect to the report, council amend Document II as revised by replacing subclause 3(c)(3) of clause 5 for exception XXXII with the following wording: "The minimum setback for the front wall of a residential use building to a private way is 0.6 meters, and be it further resolved that pursuant to subsection 3417 of the Planning Act, no further notice be given."
Thank you, Councillor Gower. That's seconded by Councillor Bradley. Is that right? Yeah, okay.
There. Just on the main, on the main motion, I have a question, so if we could hold the item, that would be appreciated.
Okay. So do we do we have to, but when we hold it, we'll approve the technical amendment and then, okay. All right, I want to go back to item 8.1 for a moment just to clarify, Consulier Plante, that you wanted to clarify that you were dissenting on that motion?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 9.1, the Transportation Committee Terms of Reference, is that are those carried?
Good.
Item 9.2 is the Wellington Street Temporary Road Closure. Assuming we're going to hold that one for some discussion. Okay, so let's do that, and let's move to the bulk consent agenda. Are there any requests to lift anything from the bulk consent agenda? Okay, is the bulk consent agenda carried?
Good.
All right. Let's go back then to item 8.2. Should we are we talking first about the amendment then?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if we want to, council wants to consider the technical amendment, then we could go on to the main motion.
Okay, are there any questions or comments about the amendment? Is the amendment carried?
Good.
Okay. Let's move on to the amended motion then. Councillor Brockington, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Just I want like staff to have the opportunity to address concerns about the capacity of the infrastructure in the immediate community to facilitate this application, should it be built? And I just think to put minds at ease, if staff could just comment on on the local infrastructure, that would be great. Thank you.
Chair, Chair, staff have reviewed the the engineering requirements for the zoning application. There was an analysis done that was completed by our senior water resource engineer. The the peak flow coming from this facility is about 0.24 liters per second, and the nominal capacity for a 13, 375-millimeter pipe is about 750 liters per second. So it's a, it's a very, very small contribution to the pipe, and staff are satisfied that there are, is adequate capacity within it.
So thank you, staff are aware of, of I guess, the immediate neighbors issues. You've looked into that and you're satisfied the infrastructure can handle any increased demand.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Brockington. Are there any other questions or comments about the motion? Okay, is the motion carried?
Carried.
All right, let's move on to item 9.2, the regarding the temporary road closure of Wellington Street and the recommendation from the Transportation Committee. I just wanted to open with a few brief remarks about this before I invite members of council to participate in the discussion. I wanted to thank the members of the Transportation Committee for their thoughtful discussion and unanimous support toward the motion regarding Wellington Street, and I also wanted to provide a brief update on the ongoing collaboration with our federal partners. But first, I want to thank Somerset Ward Councillor Ariel Troster, as well as the Chair of our Transportation Committee, Councillor Tierney, for their hard work in developing the short-term plan that we have before us today. This discussion is often framed as being about the simple topic of whether Wellington will be open or closed to vehicles. But it's really about the future that we imagine for one of the most important streets, not only in our city, but in all of Canada. And the decision we're making today is one step in what will likely be a significant process. Whether we reopen Wellington to vehicles in the short term, we still need to discuss significant long-term decisions about who will own the street, whether it will be open to vehicles, and what the design will be. We can't make these decisions in isolation. It's important that we work with our federal partners through every step of this process. And last week, along with our interim city manager Wendy Stephenson and Phil Landry, Director of Traffic Services, I met with Ministers Bill Blair and Helena Jazak and representatives from Public Services and Procurement Canada to engage with them on the future of Wellington Street, the Parliamentary Precinct, and downtown Ottawa. We had a productive conversation in which we both shared our thoughts about the future, and the federal representatives reaffirmed their commitment to work together as we develop a plan that truly works for all of us. There are a number of factors to consider, including traffic in downtown Ottawa, access for small business owners and residents, safety and security, public spaces and access to those public spaces, tourism and planification of destinations, public transit, and more. And I think we can all agree there are many risks, including a medium-to-long-term scenario where Wellington continues to look like it has for the past year, with ugly barricades and very little activity. These are important considerations, and any permanent decision will be fundamental to the future of our city. If we are, for example, to transfer ownership of Wellington or any part of our downtown to the federal government, we must do so in a way that's consistent with our plans for the city and the best interests of our residents. This will require proper consideration because it will impact our city for generations to come. This is not just a challenge, but an enormous opportunity. With the right approach to Wellington Street, we can improve the downtown experience for our residents and visitors. All right, are there any comments or questions of staff? Councillor Troster?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to provide a little context to council about the work that went into this motion and why it's not simply just a motion to reopen Wellington to traffic. It is a motion to make the street much safer than it was before we abruptly shut it down. As a councillor for Somerset Ward, I, my chief concerns were, number one, to ensure that emergency services are never overwhelmed ever again in an attempt to protect Parliament. You know, here we are at the one-year anniversary from a very, very dark time in our city and in our wards. So there have been three attempts to reoccupy the city since the convoy last year, and I am happy to say that emergency services were successful in preventing that from happening. So I am somewhat reassured in that regard. And there's two elements to this motion that I worked collaboratively with Councillor Tierney and with the mayor's office. One is to install a temporary bike lane along Wellington Street. This is a bike lane that was planned and that's in the works anyway, but we're going to throw it down temporarily to immediately make the street safer from day one. And then the second piece was language around a seasonal pilot this summer with some actual resources and animation attached to it, so we can start to imagine what a pedestrianized Wellington might actually look like. The problem now, barricades, nothing happening, not a lot of public support when there's nothing going on. So, and I'll also say, as the ward councillor for this chunk of Wellington, my inbox has been really divided. The pedestrian and cycling community is very excited about a pedestrianized Wellington in the future and are against reopening it to cars. I will also say I have residents who are cyclists and pedestrians themselves in the north part of Centertown that are seeing really negative traffic impacts, including threats to pedestrian safety on Bay Street near Laurier and where there's a huge number of towers. I'm also hearing people need to drive around to Quebec to get back through into certain parts of the neighborhood, which is problematic. So I just wanted to be really clear, my priority is to see Wellington pedestrianized in the future, but a lot of the solutions that would allow for that flexibility of traffic flow are very expensive. We all get very excited at Transportation Committee about those movable bollards like they have in front of the U.S. Embassy. Those kinds of investments need federal partnership. So if federal partners are watching this meeting, please come to the table and negotiate with us as equals. And I also just want to say, I understand that Sean Menard has a proposal to strengthen the language about pedestrianization and the pilot even more, and I'm absolutely open to hear that conversation. But I want to thank the Transportation Committee for working with me to try to make this a more complete motion. It turns the street to a better state than it was in when we had to arbitrarily close it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Troster, and thank you again for all your hard work on this issue. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councillor Troster, for, for all this work. This is not easy. My, my question is, in terms of the cycling, when we talk about temporary, I just want to make sure we're not just putting up flex stakes, that we're putting up safe protection for cyclists. The implication might be that it's just flex stakes. We know that that's not the best. So even though it's temporary, I mean, we talked about temporary with stopping cars with big blocks of cement. Let's, let's, are we going to have it so that we can really protect cyclists along there?
Okay. I think we have an answer for you. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The plan, at least for this year, is to put painted lines with flex posts. The rationale for that is putting any other type of protection like pin curves becomes very expensive. So we want to get something done sooner that's affordable. And, and again, we're also looking in terms of what the street will look like. We expect it will potentially just be a lane in each direction, so it'll be able to provide some buffer between the cycling facility and where traffic is. Again, we're working on those plans, and once we've come up with a proposed plan, we will be circling that, working with the world councillor on that to get her confirmation, and we'll be providing an update to council.
Thank you, and what about connectivity? Because that is also pretty dangerous, the getting from, say, Sussex to, to that area.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's the plan, is to just not look at the portion that's closed today, is to look from Sussex all the way to Lion, if we can go even further, that, that'll be there. So that's, that's sort of our assignment, is help me maximize the, the length of the cycling facility and make a connection that brings you from one point to the other point.
Thank you. I, I do hope you'll consider stronger measures, though. Thank you for, for the cyclists.
Thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Menard?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and appreciate all the discussion on this item. I think when it came forward, obviously there's, there's concern about what the future of this street will look like and how we're going to achieve that. And in the motion that I think was put forward, there's some broad strokes there. What I've tried to do is, is get a little more specific with report back timelines with some of the program activation potential, as well as stating very clearly council's support for the vision of a vista in the most iconic, you know, visual in the country. And so I think it's important to indicate that with support of, of council. And so the motion that, that I've got has been distributed. Mayor, I can read it out now if you'd like. Seconded by Councillor Troster and also provided to the original movers of the motion and, and city staff. I understand support the motion. So if you, if it's okay, I can read that out if you'd like.
Yep, please go ahead. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. So be it resolved that committee recommendation two be amended to read as follows, that the federal government be encouraged to advance seasonal or event-specific road closures for 2023 through dynamic proposals and requests for partnerships with the city, including initiatives with the Sparks Street Mall Authority, business groups, and other potential partners for special events, and that the progress on these efforts be communicated out to Transportation Committee via memorandum before July 1st, 2023, and be it further resolved that committee recommendation five be amended as follows: "The council supports the vision of Wellington Street as a sustainable transportation corridor, and that staff continue to work with Public Service and Procurement Canada on finalizing a traffic study and report back to Transportation Committee and Council in the first quarter of 2024 or sooner, including an update on ongoing discussions, recommendations, and any requests resulting from the negotiation framework." Mayor, I'll just say that I'm hopeful that colleagues will support this. It's a minor amendment, but one that gives a bit more teeth to the motion and has very clear timelines for reporting back in Q2 of this year, as well as encourages partnership with the federal government and other bodies to make the street what we all think it can be through pilot project. So I hope that there's broad support around it for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Menard. So we can continue to comment on the proposed amendment and the, and the recommendation from the Transportation Committee itself. We'll go next to Councillor Carr.
Thank you very much. I actually just have a I'll ask my first question. So my first question is with respect to the, the recommendation to open the road. And the, the Public Order Emergency Commission is currently, they just got an extension on the report, which was supposed to be released February 6th. It's now going to be released February 20th. Justice Roulo got it, there's an extension. I wondered how, if that decision could potentially implicate the reopening of the road and, and how that would be taken into consideration. That's my, my first question, and then I will probably have a second question with, with with respect to the amendment that, that Councillor Menard just brought forward.
Okay. Are you directing that question to anyone in particular, or?
For me?
Are you directing that question to?
I guess it would be to staff, I guess, how that could potentially implicate the recommendation to reopen the road.
Yeah. How the, how the report from the Public Order Emergency Commission could impact just future decisions about the road?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure that the Public Order Commission will impact that decision, but we could certainly look at it and, and you know, make some comments and follow recommendations that may come from it if required. I just, I think the Public Order Emergency Commission is going to be looking at whether or not calling the emergency was the right action of the government as opposed to local decisions. That's my opinion at this point.
Thank you. Can I use my, a little bit more time to ask a second question? Yeah, I, I just, and I guess it's probably a question to Councillor Menard with respect to the amended motion that is bringing forward. I just wondered if, what is being asked in that motion, if it the, if it would, if the original motion would exclude, would preclude those things from occurring? If that makes sense, I've sort of phrased that incorrectly. But without the specifications that Councillor Menard has brought forward, would the original motion allow for those things to happen, if that makes sense? Sorry.
Sure. No, that's, that's fine, Councillor. The, the original motion is broad strokes, and I believe staff can work within that original motion to achieve some of these things. It's just putting council's very clear direction that we support a vision of pedestrianization here and that in the future, there would be a report back period. So that's not in the current one, but right now we're asking for a memo prior to July of 2023 that would come back to, to committee and council and indicate how the negotiations are going. The other thing that it does is it more clearly specifies the partnership with the federal government potential for the type of program activation that we're looking to get here. So I think it's more explicit about the intent for a pilot of some sort this summer, and that's, that's supported by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Carr. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My first question is regarding a traffic light that disappeared at the intersection of Metcalf and Wellington. It's an open intersection now. When was that removed? Why was it removed? And will that traffic light be coming back? Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the signal was removed last spring, and the reason for that is we didn't, there weren't many vehicles on the road, so the light continued to cycle, and we just saw people crossing the street back and forth. And what was happening is when there were vehicles there and they had the light, the green light, the pedestrians weren't expecting them, so it just became a safety issue. So what we did is we removed the signals and installed multi-way stops. And so the plan would be if, if council approves a reopening of the road, is that we'll work to get the signals reinstalled. And and once before the road gets reopened, they will be back in operation as they were pre-last last year.
Right. Okay, fair enough. Part three of the motion talks about the work that the city, the GM of planning, and the feds are doing with respect to talking about the vision for the street. But can I get a sense of what are the timelines of this discussion? And what is the the venue for council or Transportation Committee to at least get progress reports throughout 2023? What type of timeline? I think this is going to take a while, so when can we expect to get a report back on the progress of those discussions?
Mr. Mayor, in terms of timelines, negotiations or discussions, I should say, are ongoing, as as the mayor alluded to in his comments. Certainly, we will be reporting back once the traffic study analysis is complete. If there is anything to report back in advance of that, we would certainly bring that forward to committee and council. But I suspect you're right, Counselor. This will this will take some time.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. But if I'm looking at the Chair of Transportation Committee, maybe if if he can insist that, you know, at the mid-year mark, maybe in June, that the committee get an update, that would be appreciated, and I'll I'll leave that with him. I guess my final comments are I'm, you know, I'm supportive of this motion. I think that I see this as an interim decision point while talks are ongoing, and I think there's fantastic potential to revitalize and even redesign the street. It's like a grand alley in in many other world capitals. And what makes Wellington different is it's in front of Parliament Hill. It's the cradle of of our democracy here in Canada. And the feds absolutely have to be part of this discussion. Yes, it's a city street now, but at the end of the day, this has to be a mutual conversation and vision together. I also want to point out, with all the benefits we've heard of of making this a much more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, even public transit, many residents have missed the opportunity of driving on the street to see the parliament buildings, to take guests who are out of town, who are visiting Ottawa. And many of these comments have come from older residents who don't have basically the physical mobility to park in the core and walk up the hill to Wellington. And in the grand scheme of things, that may not be a major point for some, because a lot of other advocates are sort of championing what they would like to see with Wellington. But there has to be an opportunity for people who physically can't get out and walk, who want to see through the parliamentary precinct to incorporate that into a final vision. So I'm very, very open and encouraged. And yes, I do want to see a repurposed Wellington Street. But we can't forget, it has to be a street for all people to enjoy and visit. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Conseiller Claude?
Thank you so much. My question is for the staff. Maybe I didn't understand the logistic. If we are going to reopen Wellington Street, there will be OC Transport buses as well as STO buses that will pick up people and drop passenger. What will happen with the cycling section? How does it work? We will be working together with OC Transport to make sure what we were going to do. When we were closing the street, there was only one route on Wellington Street. And also they change their schedule when they're traveling within downtown. Normally, they will transit through Lion and other streets. So if we do have to make some modification to the routes of OC Transport, we will present it to you. So are you confirming that you didn't talk to OC Transport or STO with the cycling path? You mean for the permanent path or the temporary one? We're talking about the one with the flex post. You said that you want to have them, so you're not having any discussion with our OC Transport or STO? What you will do for the cyclists, people who are using public transport? Is that what I understand? I did talk to Mr. Strangier prior to that. We had some routes on Wellington before they were closed. So when we'll decide to reopen Wellington Street, they will discuss it at that point. And this can be presented in front of council when we will be talking about reopening Wellington Street. So if we need service, we will reroute some buses. And we also want to have some protected bright lanes for the users. Just to confirm once not once more, there are no agreement between the city, OC Transport, and STO. So for right now, you're limiting yourself to discussions? Exactly. We have to wait if it's going to be approved. We want to ensure the safety of everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you.
The that would be one of the things that we would normally do during the period between a decision by council and the time when the street would be reopened, which is not going to happen for several weeks at a minimum, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. There's a lot of steps that we have to take to reopen the road. And consultation with the key stakeholders is something that would be included, including OC Transport and STO. We just we've already started discussions in terms of what it might look like. But again, once we get approval today, if that happens, then we would have a team to work directly on that and address any issues that might come up.
And the road, if if council chooses to reopen the road to vehicles, the road won't be reopened to vehicles until all of those all of those issues have been addressed and 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 we can be sure that it's going to be safe for everyone.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Kits?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just looking for a staff comment on the motion. And similar to Counselor Carr's question to the mover, whether it's staff staff's opinion that it's needed or helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, staff can work with the existing motion, the revised motion. The only key difference is the reporting back on any temporary seasonal events during during the summer of 2023, which could be a direction, could be a motion if it was council's will. So in short, yes, we can work with it. Doesn't change the task for either motion.
Okay, thank you. And do staff currently have the resources to take the lead on the programming in time for the summer? Is that a realistic timeline?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, staff can assist. As as we heard at committee from, for instance, the Sparks, Spark Street Mall Authority, there are costs associated with that. So absent of a financial resources, staff would be having these discussions with PSBC, NCC, the Mall Authority, and others to seek partnerships and and funding to do any any types of these measures.
Okay, thank you. And above and beyond the funding for the actual programming, would it be a resourcing issue? Like, would you need to take anything off your work plan in order to, sort of as I said, take the lead on looking at different programming opportunities and managing that relationship with the federal government?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, if if this were to become a city-led project, yes, it would involve redistribution of of staff resources. We're prepared to assist with those discussions with other parties. But it is correct that we are limited in terms of what we can bring to the table.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Kits. Counselor Divine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am a I'm generally supportive of the of the the main motion, the recommendations before us. I echo Counselor Troster's comments on what we believe to be the intention of the motion. And I'm generally supportive of the amendments proposed by Counselor Menard. But I'm I'm uncertain about what the Second Amendment means. So this is a question for for the mover, for Counselor Menard. If you can help me understand what you mean by that first sentence of the Second Amendment, that council supports the vision of Wellington Street as a sustainable transportation corridor, only because I don't I don't yet know the vision, so I'm not sure about supporting the vision if I don't yet know it. But I would love, it sounds really good. I just want to understand better what you mean by it.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Divine, for the question. The sustainable modes of transportation, there are more, some that are more sustainable than others. So when you look at those traditionally, those are things like walking, biking, scooters, public transport, public transit. Those are normally referred to as sustainable transportation. And in this case, obviously, just proposal for for rail, either underground or on surface through this corridor. There's a lot of potential that we've got here, and I think it's important that we recognize, look, we're opening something back up after convoy occupation that didn't do well. We we didn't try anything in this corridor. And it didn't work, right? Bridget Pellerin's words were exactly right. We tried nothing and it didn't work. And so what we're getting at is, look, around that committee table and the people that have been running into us, you know, support this as a sustainable transportation corridor. And we need to make sure the council agrees with that. If the intent here is to open this up and just keep this open for years and years to to vehicles on this main vista, like no other G7 country would would do at this point, I don't think that's a wise decision. And that's my concern with the overall motion right now is there is no vision. There is nothing laid out for what this should be in the future. It's just opening it back up to cars and hoping that we get a deal from the federal government. And I don't think that's sustainable, and I don't think that's right for for what, you know, what the city has been through and what the vision was going to be for this corridor when it was originally, you know, intended for more active transportation, but without any effort. And so it's that it's a basic, you know, very basic nod to the fact that council should have a bigger vision about this space, not just open it back up to cars, because, hey, nothing has worked to this point because we haven't tried anything.
Thank you, Counselor Menard. I still got four minutes, eh? Yeah, thank you. That that does help me understand a lot, because I am supportive of the fact that Wellington should be both a place for the circulation of 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 people and for and a place for people itself. And your your amendment helps clarify to me that you're seeking that on the circulation of people aspect of it, you're looking for it to be the most efficient and sustainable way of circulating people. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you, Counselor Divine. I'll just respond quickly to what Counselor Menard said now, just because I'll forget otherwise later. But I my view is that is that the motion that we're dealing with today is in in accepting the fact, as the Transportation Committee did, that the motion that closed Wellington Street expired on December 31st, 2022, and that a decision needs to be taken about Wellington now. I think this creates an opportunity to discuss the vision for Wellington Street going forward, the perfect opportunity to do that. I don't think that vision needs to be prescribed or built into this motion. I think it it can be the discussion that we begin now with our federal partners. I would also clarify that when we say no other G7 country would have a road like this. Actually, in London, England, the the road that continues off the Westminster Bridge by the Palace of Westminster, which is where the House of Commons of the United Kingdom is, that road is open. And it's a lot closer to the parliament buildings in in the United Kingdom than than Wellington Street is to the parliament buildings in Ottawa. There is no great lawn between, as there is in Ottawa, between the Palace of Westminster and the road on which cars can travel. So that's not a reason to to keep Wellington Street open to vehicles, but it is a point of clarification. Other G7 capitals, other capital cities around the world have taken different approaches to how they've handled security and and traffic. So all of our options are open. But I think the this opens the door to us having the discussion about the vision, and we don't need to prescribe the vision in this particular motion. Let's go next to Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's for staff. The NCC has a lot of peculiar particularities about design, things down to the color of the backing board of the traffic light on the backside. Do you foresee that delaying implementation? Do you do you foresee that delaying reinstallation of the traffic lights in any way? Like, were were the existing lights stored or were they redeployed at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we don't. I mean, the lights were there. They were removed temporarily, so we would just reinstall them. That being said, we would try to put the the black poles that they like and from that perspective.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would repeat all the things you said, and then what Counselor Brockington said as well about what the seniors who are writing to me are saying about wanting to have access to the parliament buildings. In in our office, we've been getting a lot of emails, people saying that they would like it to be all pedestrian. And we've been getting a lot of emails that say they would like it open. And then we've had other emails where people have said, what about a similar model to Lansdowne, where there is an ability, but the speed limit's 20, and people just meander through? There are many options. And I guess my overall point, then, is that that is what is to come, the discussions on what is to come, not a decision right now. Now is to open again and then have those discussions. The last thing I will say is there's also so much to come, not on Wellington, but near Wellington, which is Le Breton Flats, and what that will mean and and how the roadwork will go there and how the traffic will flow around there that would affect what happens on Wellington. And the discussions about Spark Street and how that ties into the entire area. So I think there's a lot more to come. Nothing I would want to solidify right now with the amendment, but I will be supporting the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Curry. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I I'm I'm interested in this conversation for our further transportation master plan and Transportation Committee conversations, because what we're trying to do is square a circle. Wellington Street is an arterial road, so its function is to move cars. That is what it is designed to do by traffic engineers. And here we have it in front of this, you know, beautiful, iconic, very meaningful space. And we're going to have to try and resolve how we make break open this function of a road to suit all kinds of of modes. And this is a conversation that is going to come up again and again at Transportation Committee and with the master plan. So I'm very encouraged to continue wrestling with this. I'm also thinking about some of the particularities in the amendment when it comes to the animation of the space. So we know sometimes that, like from the Spark Street BIA, that these things can be incredibly costly. So what I might ask for staff is, as they're considering how to support animation of the space, is if we can't increase revenues for these community actors to animate the space, what we might be able to do is reduce their expenses. And so that might help them to access the the space and to animate it. So could there be a consideration for perhaps the, you know, the bylaw regulatory services or the recreation kind of animations to to reduce expenses to try and push these pilot projects forward in a timely way?
Mr. Mayor, we can certainly take a look at, you know, all aspects of, you know, a seasonal or temporary event. That would be a very small piece of the puzzle, but we're happy to take a look at that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor DeRash?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to think I'm bringing an open mind today, as I did when we looked at this very closely at the Transportation Committee. And I think there is a great deal of concern right across the city, and certainly in my ward, on the state of the downtown and its future. And I think the protests and the occupations was a time when we were really, together as a city, with a concern for the downtown core, and I think that continues. I'm certainly willing to support this. I I appreciate that the ask is for the federal government to to provide funding. And let's hope that potentially that's a yes. But to the mover, if the answer is no, I I just want to manage expectations that the ask won't come back to the council table if we support this for city funding for this.
Thanks very much, Counselor. That's a that's a great question. That is what we've been working with city staff on. They had talked to me about what activation would cost in this area just for the stretch that we're that we're speaking about in front of the hill and that their the funds aren't allocated there. So that would have to be a future discussion, obviously, to see if that would ever come back. But the ideal area that we go in here, and I think what we're trying to do with this motion is specifically ask the feds, the NCC, other partners to come to the table with us, because I think they have a vested interest here. That's the main portion of this motion. Obviously, it gets council support behind that, which we don't have in the other main motion. So, you know, appreciate the question, and I don't think the the intent is for the city to pay for this, given that we've got all these partners that I think really want to see a change here as well. So, good question. Appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the answer. And as I said, my concern is just the expectations that will be created, that the boomerang comes back to this this council. So I'll I'll
So I'll continue to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor De Rush. Just before we we vote on the amendment and then the and then the motion itself, I'll just say I'm I'm not supportive of the amendment. I appreciate the the spirit behind it and and the intent behind it. And I respect the 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 ideas behind it. But I think a lot of work and collaboration went into the original motion at the Transportation Committee. And that work was productive and helpful and led to the unanimous support of the Transportation Committee on the motion that we have before us. I want to provide staff with the greatest flexibility possible going forward in terms of what we can do with that space this year and beyond. And I don't want to limit the negotiations and discussions that we're having with the federal government in any way. And again, I I I think everything that this amendment sets out to do is possible under the original motion. And the and I I think we need to have a discussion about our vision for Wellington Street before we are prescriptive in this specific motion. So I won't be supporting the amendment, but I do support the motion itself. And I want to thank everyone for this important discussion. And I know the discussion has not just been today, but it's been going on throughout the last couple of weeks. I'm grateful that all of you share the view that this is an important decision. And it's also the first step in a critical process that will shape the future of our downtown.
I'm happy to see the engagement of the community on this big decision. Before that, Wellington Street was blocked. We had some barricades. This was between Bank and Algin.
Since this issue was put on the agenda of the Transportation Committee, residents and others have been talking and writing about Wellington and the future of our downtown core. And we've started important and respectful conversations with the federal government. I see all of this as healthy and productive. As a city, we open and close roads all the time without incident or without much concern. But this time it's different, obviously, because it's not just about a road, it is about the future of downtown Ottawa. I know that members of council have heard from people throughout Ottawa on this issue. We've heard from residents who live in our downtown and use Wellington on a daily basis. We've heard from the business community who rely on Wellington for deliveries to their companies on Spark Street and other areas of the parliamentary precinct. We've also heard from our political leaders here at the city and on Parliament Hill. It's critically important that we make any decisions about Wellington today and in the future based on the most important criteria and our collective values. We can't let fear drive our decisions. We can't base lasting choices on one event. We must choose wisely based on our goals for the next several generations. As the conversation continues beyond today, we must move beyond the events of the past and focus on the best possible future for downtown Ottawa. No matter what happened a year ago, it's important to remember that our city is remarkably safe and well protected, especially when compared to other capital cities. And our democratic institutions remain open and accessible. In the short term, I support the decision of the Transportation Committee to reopen Wellington to vehicles. For a number of reasons, I believe that serves both our immediate and our long-term interest.
I think that we will make the right decision today. It will be a short-term decision. It will be more important than ever that we will make the the right decision on the long term in the next few months.
Be open or closed to vehicles, but under whose jurisdiction it will fall. And whether or not it's closed to vehicles, it can't look like it does today. It must become an even better space for the community and for the country. Each of these decisions must be made with the best interests of the City of Ottawa in mind. Whatever we choose long term, it must work for our residents and for all Canadians who experience the capital. I remind you that the decision that council makes today is not the end of the process. In fact, it is just the beginning. We will continue to engage the community. We will continue to engage the federal government. In the short term, we will improve Wellington as a public space. In the long term, we will turn it into something truly special for Ottawa and for Canada. So with that, I see, Councillor Menard, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mayor, so I just was hoping to get wrap up on the amendment at some point.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. And I appreciate, you know, the dialogue and discussion on this. I I guess I wanted to be very clear about what this amendment does and also read to you the words of of our staff as well. The amendment does three things. Number one, it clearly outlines that the federal government should be paying for this, that there is an expectation of a report back period for a pilot this summer, and that there is a vision that this municipality believes in around sustainable transportation in front of the most iconic building in the country. I think it's important that we pass this motion, because otherwise we are just leaving this at the at the whim of direction that has not been given without a vision. And so this is a very basic motion that if we can't even get behind something where we're opening this road up again and can't have a basic motion pass that does a few of these things to seek more clarity, then I'm not sure what, you know, what the point is. I guess we, you look at other G seven capitals, and I know the the mayor mentioned London, England. Well, you look at London, England, you look at Hyde Park and, you know, the Regent Park, Westminster Hall. These are areas that the 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 green space in front of that broader London area serves that population very well for things like active transportation. We don't have that as much in this quarter or in this area. And so I think that's what I'm trying to get at, is that I think our federal partners really want this to happen. And I think this gives us more leverage, to be honest. If you start with a pilot project of pedestrianization and activation of that street, there's only more leverage for the owners of that and the potential there, not less. Opening it up to cars isn't isn't just going to provide more leverage. It's the vision and the work that we're going to do together to make this area truly fantastic. And so that's that's what I'd like to underline with with folks here today is, you know, there's a there's a real potential for vision here. And let's make sure we're not leaving on the table a report back period for a pilot this summer, a vision about sustainable transportation, and that that very clearly council says the federal government should pay for this, which is what this motion does. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Menard. Again, I would just reiterate that I my feeling is with the original motion, we're able to do all of that and still have the flexibility required. And I I I feel confident that the work that went into this at the Transportation Committee reached an appropriate outcome. But I respect where you're coming from in that, Councillor Menard. All right, let's let's vote on the, oh, sorry.
I I yeah. I'm not even sure. I just wanted to, with regards to the Menard Amendment, I do see the two clauses in the Menard Amendment as two very different things. The second clause definitely asks us to support a vision that, as you say, Mr. Mayor, we have not yet had, and and the goal is to have that conversation separately. But the first clause of the of the Menard Amendment just seeks to put a little bit more rigor into when we might get a report back. So I'd like to ask, I think I'm allowed to ask this, if we could vote on the two amendments separately?
Sure. Yep. Okay, let's vote first then on the amendment to number two. I assume we'll need a recorded vote for this. Yeah, we're going to vote first on on the amendment to point number two of the original motion, and then we'll vote separately on point number five of the original motion. The amendment to point number five of the original motion. So we're voting first on be resolved the committee recommendation to be amended to read as follows.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Devine?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
No.
Councillor Currie?
No.
Councillor Kelly?
No.
Councillor Kits?
No.
Councillor Lowe?
No.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Carr?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Conseil plant?
Weep.
Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor DeRus?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Truster?
Yes.
Councillor Lulov?
No, mercy.
Councillor DeRush?
No.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Mayor Sutcliffe?
No.
Ten yeas, fifteen nays?
Thank you. So we'll now vote on a recommendation on on the be it further resolved the committee recommendation five be amended as follows. Go ahead.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Devine?
No.
Councillor Hill?
No.
Councillor Currie?
No.
Councillor Kelly?
No.
Councillor Kits?
No.
Councillor Lowe?
No.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Carr?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Conseil plant?
No.
Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor DeRus?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Truster?
Yes.
Councillor Lulov?
No.
Councillor DeRush?
No.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Mayor Sutcliffe?
No.
Eight yeas, seventeen nays?
Thank you. So now we will move to the vote on the recommendation itself from the Transportation Committee. Is the motion carried?
I'd like to register dissent, please.
Pardon? Okay. We have one. Are there any other dissents?
Dissent from Councillor Menard.
Okay. Two dissents, any others? Okay. Thank you. All right, there are no in-camera items, so we'll move now to item twelve, motion to adopt reports. Councillor DeRus.
Seconded by Councillor Menard that the Planning and Housing Committee Report to Transportation Committee Report One and the report from the City Clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirement at the City Council Meeting of January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three, be received and adopted as amended.
All right, is that received and adopted as amended? Received, all right, thank you. All right, motions of which notice has previously been given. And we have a motion from Councillor King, and I understand that motion has been amended slightly to adjust the dates that are referenced in the motion. Is that right, Councillor King?
Correct, that's correct. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, your worship. I'm pleased for the second consecutive time to introduce a motion recognizing National Youth Week in Ottawa. National Youth Week celebrates youth engagement and showcases the abilities and talents of our youth in civic engagement, recreation, arts, and sports. Last year, Youth Ottawa coordinated a tremendous amount of programming that included an active youth showcase right here at City Hall, which highlighted several amazing community-based projects by students, which include community gardens and little free libraries. Events last year also featured the works of young artists, musicians, and creative industries under Youth Ottawa's Artistic Mentorship Program and offered youth the opportunity to have their voices heard through candid conversations about community engagement with the former mayor and other policymakers. Due to the incredible success of last year's series of events and Youth Ottawa's determination to showcase even more amazing and innovative projects this year, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce a motion that will once again demonstrate the boundless creativity of our local youth. Therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of its benefits and values and to provide a focal point within the year for increasing awareness concerning youth development, the City of Ottawa hereby proclaims May first to May seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as National Youth Week.
Thank you, Councillor King. Any other comments or questions? Is motion carried?
Good.
All right, thank you. Before we move to item thirteen point two, prior to dealing with the motion on commemorative naming, there is a motion from Councillor Brown on an updated commemorative naming for Babe McCray Park. So I'm asking for suspension of the rules to deal with that motion first. On suspension of the rules, is that carried?
Good.
Okay, Councillor Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and to our council colleagues. I do apologize that this item is coming before us again. I'll read the therefore be resolved clauses just to save time, and then I'll provide a little bit of context. Therefore, be it resolved that the new unnamed park located at three seven five Maynal Road, Richmond, Ontario, be named the Babe McCray Park and be it further resolved that the park located at two four five Maynal Road in Richmond, Ontario, known as Maynal Park, retain its name as Maynal Park. And be it further resolved that an appropriate stand and plaque be installed, displaying the name and including a brief history of Babe McCray's contributions. And be it further resolved that all costs related to the production and installation of the stand, plaque, and subsequent event will be funded through the councillor's office. Mr. Mayor, council colleagues, after council provided their approval for this motion at our previous meeting, staff in the Planning Parks Department did approach me about this new soon-to-be-constructed park. And it was their request and suggestion that instead of renaming the existing park that we named the new park in honor of Mr. McCray, I thought it was a reasonable request, which is why it's coming to you again. So I hope I can have my council colleagues support on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Brown. Any comments or questions on that? Is the motion carried?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's move to item number thirteen point two, which is about the commemorative naming policy and was introduced previously by Councillor Dudas. Councillor Dudas?
Thank you, Mayor Sutcliffe. When I originally read this in, it didn't have a date, so it was an indefinite amount of time that staff are asking for. I have now asked that you will note that I'll read the therefore be resolved in a moment. But I also want to note that I had some wonderful discussions with Councillor DeRush and others in regards to just what this means and how this will impact our ability to commemorate and and remember a lot of the amazing people in our community through this process. Staff need the time to catch up. There's a backlog of twenty-eight of these, and they did not have the funding for for quite some time to be able to do so. This will give them the ability to to get rid of that backlog and then refocus. So I know all of us have people in our community who deserve recognition, and that will come forward. This will give community or staff the chance to to get back to where they need to be, as well as determine the best process for the community to file those applications. So I will read the amended therefore be resolved that a moratorium be placed on any new commemorative names for municipal parks, streets, and facilities until staff report back to council on revised commemorative naming policy for municipal streets, parks, and facilities in Q one, two thousand twenty-four. Be it further resolved that this moratorium include commemorative names brought forward by way of the formal program applications and by motions to City Council. Be it further resolved that any commemorative naming applications received as of February eighth, two thousand twenty-three may proceed for consideration and are not subject to this moratorium. Be it further resolved that noncommemorative street naming not involving persons will continue as normal as part of the street registration process for new streets. And be it further resolved that following the adoption of the overarching municipal commemoration policy, staff prepare a report recommending a revised commemorative naming policy for parks, streets, facilities that is more inclusive, comprehensive, and sustainable.
Thank you, Councillor Dudas. Any any comments or questions on that? Councillor Brockington? Go ahead, Councillor Brockington.
Thank you. Could staff just talk about the policy that we have now with respect to commemorative namings? And how they envision the new policy based on some of the wording that Councillor Dudas just read would look?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The policy that we have now dates back quite a few years. I think it originally started in the City Clerk's office and was transferred to Recreation and Culture in two thousand sixteen, I believe. We are doing a comprehensive review of commemorations overall through our cultural unit. We have an excellent team of outside stakeholders advising us. And we're looking at many of the issues that have been discussed around this table. For example, a more inclusive policy that looks at recognizing For example, the more inclusive policy that looks at recognizing Indigenous, more women, all of the kind of priority areas that we've been asked to look at. So we are looking at that, not just in the context of commemorative namings, but looking at all of the other ways that the city commemorates, memorializes its residents. So the intent is to come back with some guidelines in terms of doing that, addressing some of the more difficult issues like removing commemorations that are in some cases, you know, outdated perhaps. So a more comprehensive look at the policy. The intent with the portion that applies to this is that we would reflect the things that we are building into the overall umbrella policy into the commemorative naming policy itself, so that it is more representative, more reflective of the community, and serves us better for the years to come. And that when we reopen nominations, that it's under a new set of guidelines.
Excellent. It's obviously important on a cyclical basis to review policy and make sure it's up to date and modernized and reflects the desires of the people we represent. So that's good. How many commemorative namings are community-based or community-driven versus more of a corporate-driven approach?
I don't have an exact number for you, but I can tell you just kind of anecdotally that most that have come forward have either come from community nominations or from through councillors' offices, where a resident may have asked a councillor's office to facilitate a commemoration. Sometimes that's through the standard process. More recently, there has been more of an influx of by motion. But for the most part, I would say they are community grassroots roots-based, and much like the ones that you approached this morning are often kind of grassroots community.
Excellent. Okay, and so can you just speak to the piece that talks about a moratorium? Why are we not able to review policy concurrent with keeping or continuing to allow commemorative naming applications to move forward?
Mr. Mayor, there are two issues here. The first is that the commemorative naming program is a very small program that has one staff that spends a lot of time on it. And we do have, as Counselor Dudus mentioned, we do have a backlog of, I think it is now over 30 nominations that have been approved but not actualized out in the community. Several reasons for that. In some cases, it was the pandemic and the inability to move forward, to do consultations, all of those things, in some cases, funding. So what we would like to do is take this year, have staff in addition to working on the policy, is to do a catch-up in terms of the ones that haven't been so installing the plaques, having the events, working with the councillors' offices, those kinds of things. So it is, as Counselor Dudus' motion speaks, to give us a bit of a breather in terms of a catch-up year to do that. It will also give us an opportunity to put more of a focus on the policy work and to find the resources to implement the ones that are outstanding at this point. So that is really why we're looking at the moratorium. It will also stop the fairly significant regular flow of either formal program applications, which require vetting, affidavits, background research, as well as the motions that are coming forward, because for every, even for every motion, there is a requirement to then produce a plaque, have an event, all of those kinds of things. So it's to provide us with a bit of space.
Excellent. I just wanted to say there's a big difference between needing to park a program because we want to modernize policy and the application process versus an operational challenge because of staffing resources. And so I would look to you, Mr. General Manager, that in addition to bringing a modernized policy to committee is if you are under-resourced, that has to be addressed as well. Because I think this program is very important, and the process needs to flow well, and we're certainly looking to you for your best recommendations. And Mr. Mayor, my last comment is this. Should council endorse this move today and put a moratorium on the commemorative naming process, I would hope that council would be open-minded. Should that there be an urgent need for commemorative naming that a councillor can articulate well, that we would be open-minded to at least that discussion to allow that to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Counselor Kavanaugh?
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the mover for putting this forward. I've been saying for a long time, when I was the liaison on women and gender equity, that this is something that we should look at, and I appreciate that it is being looked at in a more comprehensive way. I also appreciate the reaching out in terms of looking at names for First Nation, Inuit, Métis, and other deserving communities. So I think it's long overdue, and I appreciate that it's coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Counselor Leeper?
Thanks. Just wondering, what are your plans for public consultation on the new policy?
Mr. Mayor, we haven't designed it right now. We're in the, and we have been for the last little while, working on the content, the direction, the research, those kinds of things. But we do plan on a fulsome consultation, both in terms of the policy directions, but also I think what is emerging is commemorative naming is one channel that we have, and we have a few others, benches and trees and those kinds of things. But increasingly, what we're finding is that others, there are other ideas out there, and I think part of our process will be to solicit what a more fulsome municipal commemoration program might look like, and some new things that might innovate, give other opportunities, so that it's not just namings and benches. It could be more. And we're interested in hearing from residents about some of the things that they've seen that they would like the city to look at as well.
That sounds like a media consultation, something for this fall?
Without committing, absolutely. I think that is the timeline that we'd be looking to start at, yes.
Fantastic. I look forward to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Leeper. Counselor Conseil Plante?
Oui, merci beaucoup, Monsieur le Maire. This file is very important to me because I sort of got my start in a lot of municipal politics with the Annie Purukook Park. And I know, Dan, you are also involved in the Annie Purukook Park, so thank you so much for you and your staff's help on that file. But one thing I would suggest, and I'm happy to work with your office on this, is a lot of residents will sort of like, who is Annie Purukook? Who is Strathcona? Who is, you know, the people that we name our parks after? So if the actual commemorative naming page could have a link to the people, their biographies, how significant they were. You know, I was just explaining to my son the other day who Walter Baker was, because he was wondering why we have a huge ice pad and area named after him. So I think that would be very helpful, and I also want to point out that less than 11%, that's our streets, pools, libraries, parks, are named after women. And it would be very helpful if we could increase the representation, because women are half the population, and they've certainly contributed to making this city as gray as it is. Merci beaucoup.
Merci, Conseil Plante. Any other questions or comments? Okay, is the motion carried?
Good.
Let's move next to item 13.3, which is a motion from Counselor Devine. And Counselor Devine, I understand you're you'd like to refer this to the Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if the motion, the original motion is up on the screen or not. So what, with regards to the original motion, what my secondary councillor Brockington and I have before you all today is a motion seeking council support for an initiative being pursued by a local Member of Provincial Parliament, an initiative to make it mandatory for certain multi-unit buildings to have emergency backup generators. The reason this motion is being pursued is to protect vulnerable residents from the dangers and the indignities that many have experienced and will continue to experience during long power outages when they don't have access to an elevator, emergency hallway lighting, or even running water. The reason that this motion was drafted in this manner is because while the consequences of inaction are local, the power to make meaningful change falls to the province, and so my motion is one way for our city to support that action. During the past week, I've been circulating my motion for support as well as discussion. The General Manager of Emergency and Protective Services has told me that he supports this initiative. The General Manager of Planning, Real Estate, and Economic Development has told me that he has no concerns with the motion. The CEO of Hydro Ottawa, Bryce Conrad, has provided a strong letter of support for this motion and for the action that it ultimately seeks. But over the past week, I've also heard really good questions raised by my colleagues, colleagues who are seeking to properly consider the motion and its implications, questions about the venue in which this motion could and should be debated, such as debating it at committee. Those questions are important to me. The process to hear them publicly is important to me. I am grateful to my colleagues who have urged me to bring this debate to a more appropriate forum. What's also important to me are the safety and quality of life of the residents most impacted by this motion, because as Bryce Conrad and I discussed last night, and in light of the certain reality of increased extreme weather events, these kinds of dangerous outages will happen again. And so in order to continue moving this discussion forward, but also to ensure that the discussion happens in the best way possible, I would like to make a motion to refer the matter to the Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee, meeting of February the 13th. At that meeting, we can hear public delegations from all sides of the debate and bring better and more complete answers to all of my colleagues' questions. And so there is a motion to defer. Be it resolved that the Devine Brockington motion regarding Bill 47 be referred to the Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee for consideration at its meeting of February 13th, 2023.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Devine. Counselor Kavanaugh?
Thank you very much, and I thank my colleague for bringing this motion forward. Anyone who's been in a building after a terrible storm where they lost power will know how important it is. I recall this in 2018 where power was lost for a few days and climbing up 20 stories to go visit people whose elevators were still not working. This is really important, and I hope to have a good conversation on this. It's very much needed. We need to update our-
Just to be clear, Counselor Kavanaugh, we should be speaking to the motion to refer to the committee, not the actual motion itself, sort of?
I'm saying that we need to hear more about, we need to hear from the people that have been harmed by this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Counselor Lowe?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not so sure it's our job to support a private members' bill, and part of me wonders for the mover if by referring this to a committee and then back up to council, wouldn't that just be, you know, a use-
This is not on referral. So we can't entertain this question at this time, but
Okay.
No. Counselor Deroche? Is this on referral itself?
Thanks, Mayor. Just on referral. Again, I have some issues with the proxy voting nature of this bill, which I won't speak to since it's referral, but you know, the next meeting is our budget meeting, where we should be focusing on the city budget. And I just am concerned that, again, this is a provincial issue, and we'd be debating at committee on the day we should be talking about our own budget, the challenges that we're having. So I won't be supporting referral to committee. Thank you.
Just to be clear, do you mean the next committee meeting is the budget meeting or the next council meeting?
Sure. The next committee meeting is the budget meeting. That this would be referred to.
Gotcha. Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate in complete agreement with Counselor Deroche, my concern would be that the next meeting for EPPS is going to be discussing the budget. I don't know that that's the right time for this, and I'm not sure that this is of such an urgent nature that it needs to be brought at the next meeting, so I will not be supporting that motion.
Counselor Brockington?
Thank you, Chair. As the mover articulated, he believes that the more, or the most appropriate venue to allow public to speak to the item and other stakeholders is committee, where committee can receive delegation. So for those who have expressed concerns with the substance of the motion, committee would be the most appropriate location. It's not automatic based on council's referral today if this is passed. The committee must procedurally pass a motion to allow the matter, because the agenda has already been distributed to allow this to go on. So if committee members have concerns when this matter comes to committee, they can make that decision. But procedurally, it's an order to refer the matter to committee today, and then the committee will decide whether or not it wants to handle at that meeting. There's, I will say, Mayor, that the the committee's agenda is fairly light. Yes, the budget is the main item, but I believe there is room to accommodate this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Counselor Curry?
On deferral, is that the right committee, though? I mean, when I hear the emails coming in about this, where people mostly are against it, they're talking about the planning implications of it and the, even like the land outside their buildings. So how would they, where would they put these generators and those kinds of questions, which is really planning? And planning staff would want to have input and finance staff in terms of what we're hearing from Ottawa Community Housing already. So I just think, which committee? Like, it seems like more than one committee. Unless you're going to have all these other staff come to that committee, I think there will be questions that are financial in nature and planning in nature, not just emergency services. So that's my comment. I don't know what anybody has to say about it, but that's my question.
Are you asking a question? Yeah. Do you want us to, I don't know if there's anyone from staff who could answer that question?
Certainly, there is a, Mr. Mayor, a building code aspect to this in terms of location of generators, but I would think the primary roots of this are an emergency access egress perspective. So subject to Mr. Yott's comments, I think staff could support or be in attendance at that committee in terms of any planning, building code issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From Emergencies Protective Services, we concur that we can have this at our committee and have staff attend to answer any questions from a planning and building code perspective.
Okay. Thank you. So on the motion to refer, Counselor Devine?
Yeah.
No, it's a procedural motion, so. On the motion to refer this to the Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee, is the motion carried? Okay, we'll have a recorded vote. Go ahead.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Counselor Devine?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Dissent. No.
Counselor Curry?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Kits?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Menard?
Yes.
Counselor Dudus?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Carr?
Yes.
Counselor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Conseil Plante?
Oui.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor DeRouze?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor Troster?
Yes.
Counselor Lulov?
No.
Counselor Deroche?
No.
Counselor Gower?
Yes.
Mayor Sackliff?
Yes.
Twenty yeas, five nays.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Devine. Let's move on to item 13.4, a motion from Counselor Brown. And I understand, Counselor Brown, you would like to introduce a motion to defer this to the next council meeting. Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just read the therefore be resolved clause and provide a little bit of context. Be it resolved that the Brown-Kelly motion be deferred to the next regular city council meeting of February 20- meeting of February 22nd, 2023. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the very substantial back and forth on this motion. I think our colleagues have asked some very good questions, and working with your office and councillor Kelly's office has been very positive. One of the things that councillor Kelly and I have done is had a few meetings with Hydro Ottawa, and we feel it's very important that as our major partner in energy and electricity here at the city, that they have the opportunity to review the substance of this motion for a little bit longer. One of the challenges brought up in our meetings was the short timeframe between last week's council meeting and this week's council meeting, but the conversations themselves have been very productive, and we're hoping our colleagues won't mind deferring this for another two weeks to give Hydro Ottawa the opportunity to continue to review it.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Any comments or questions? Okay, is the motion to defer to the next council meeting carried? Okay, 13.5 is a motion from councillor Kelly, and I believe you have a revised motion, councillor Kelly?
Yes, I do. So there was just a couple corrections and an appendix added to the motion, so they're not very large changes, but I will reread the motion just because I think there's some key pieces of information in there. So whereas the IESO is undertaking a competitive procurement process for long-term reliability projects to ensure the reliability in Ontario's electricity grid, and whereas solar flow-through funds is proposing to add 4.99 megawatts slash 19.96 megawatt hour battery energy storage system at 650 Upper Dwyer Hill Road in Ward 5 West Carlton March. And whereas the battery energy storage system supports the intent of the policies in the official plan with respect to renewable energy generation facilities and storage, and whereas the BESS is expected to occupy approximately 0.3 acres of land, including all required setbacks and spacing. And whereas the BESS will be charged by the local grid overnight when there is low electricity demand and will supply power to the grid at times of high demand, providing benefits to grid reliability. And whereas a rated criteria of the IESO procurement process is formal support from the municipality in which long-term reliability projects is proposed to be located. And whereas the deadline to submit the proposals for the IESOP is February 16th, 2023. Therefore, be it resolved that city council provide a municipal support resolution for the solar flow-through funds proposal to the independent electricity system operator to develop a battery energy storage system at 650 Upper Dwyer Hill Road, as described in this motion and in the appendix below. So I think this is a pretty straightforward and simple one, so I won't talk too long about this, and I know I've had a couple of conversations with my colleagues, and it did come up in councillor Brown and I's meeting with Hydro Ottawa yesterday, and I was happy to get their feedback on it. And moving forward, I'd be more than happy to get their feedback on things like this before seeking municipal support resolutions. But I think this is in line with the city plan and will help strengthen our grid and prepare it for a shift to a more sustainable economy, and I think it will help us achieve our climate goals. Really important for me is that there was no issues raised from residents in the area. I was not approached by any other applicants, and it does not take up any agricultural land. And I also would like to make note that the municipal support resolution's purpose is to provide rated criteria points, so that's just to help with the ranking of the proposal at the IESO. So if it was selected, the proponent would have to come back and seek site plan and permitting approvals required by the municipality. So this is not approval of the project, simply support of the idea behind. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. councillor Leeper?
Thank you, and I apologize if this cleared everybody else, but I assume that it is Ottawa Hydro that will be bidding to be allowed to build this?
No, it's not.
So who are the likely proponents of, to construct this battery?
Abundant Energy.
Sorry?
Abundant Energy. They're not, they're a Toronto company.
Okay, private sector?
Yeah.
Is Hydro interested in building this, or I don't want to get deep?
That's why I mentioned in my remarks that I hadn't heard from any other applicants or proponents who were seeking to build there or get involved in that process. So that's, that's all I know about it. I haven't heard from anybody else.
Fascinating. Yeah. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Leeper. Any other questions or comments? Is the motion carried? Thank you. All right, next we have motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. councillor Brockington has a motion on earthquake relief for Turkey and Syria on suspension of the rules. Is that carried? Okay, councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. We've all seen the devastation in Turkey and Syria, and I'm sure many of us would like to know how we can be more involved in helping with the relief efforts. Whereas on February 6, a devastating earthquake measuring 7.8 in magnitude struck 10 provinces of Turkey and northern Syria. Whereas various media outlets have reported approximately, and that number as of today is 11,000 fatalities, 23,000 injured and many others homeless, as residential dwellings have been seriously damaged or destroyed. Whereas all types of assistance is needed to assist the people impacted by the earthquake. Whereas due to the civil war in Syria is unclear how international assistance is being coordinated at this time. Whereas the Turkish Embassy in Ottawa is directing interested parties to donate to the Canadian Red Cross and to work with the Turkish Association of Canada. Whereas the association is asking for items to be dropped off at their Ottawa office that includes blankets, winter clothing, boots, tents, flashlights, shoes, sleeping bags, diapers, feminine products. Whereas Ottawa City Council has unanimously approved similar motions to assist with the Haitian earthquake relief and Caribbean nation hurricane relief. Therefore, be it resolved that city council encourage residents of Ottawa to consider a donation to assist with the disaster relief, and that the city's website hostways residents may contribute, as mentioned in the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Is the motion carried? Item 15 is notices of motion for consideration in a subsequent meeting. councillor Troster has a motion, seconded by me, on commercial to residential conversions. councillor Troster?
Yes, thank you very much. I can just read out the motion because it's pretty explanatory, but I'm really happy that the mayor's office sought to work with my office on this issue of how we can convert office buildings that are not being used in the downtown core into housing. So whereas the city of Ottawa's downtown core is facing significant challenges with fewer people working and visiting downtown, and whereas through the conversion of office buildings in the downtown core to residential buildings, the city could help lead the revitalization of our downtown and assist in the increased availability of housing. And whereas commercial to residential conversions have extensive logistical and engineering challenges and would benefit from a streamlined approval process, taking into consideration the involvement of several city of Ottawa departments, including building code services, planning services, infrastructure services, among others. And whereas the federal government has launched their Housing Accelerator Fund with an aim to remove barriers and help municipalities build more housing through measures which include the reduction in construction approval timelines and the rapid development of vacant or underused lands. And whereas the federal minister of housing and diversity and inclusion is responsible for the administration of the Housing Accelerator Fund. And whereas the Rapid Housing Initiative is the specific portion of the Housing Accelerator Fund designed to support the expansion of affordable housing stock. And whereas the city's official plan aims to maximize the ability to provide affordable housing throughout the city. And whereas in accordance with the city's 10-year housing and homelessness program, the city set a target that 20% of all new residential units be affordable. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor on behalf of council write a letter to the Minister of Housing and Diversity and Inclusion, requesting funding to help incentivize conversions with a priority and focus on affordable housing. And be it further resolved that a cross-departmental SWAT team be organized to assist in streamlining the approvals process for conversions. And be it further resolved that staff review the possibility of reducing municipal fees on conversions of office buildings to residential buildings in the downtown core for projects where 20% of the units are core affordable. And be it further resolved that staff explore other operational and capital strategies, including potentially innovative models like acquisition programs that could facilitate the conversion of office to residential in the core and report back by way of memorandum by Q3 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Troster. The next motion, a notice of motion, is conseil plan, seconded by councillor De Ruus. Conseil plan?
Oui, merci, monsieur le maire. Whereas on February 24th, 2022, the Russian Federation launched a full-scale military invasion of Ukraine, seeking to destroy the Ukrainian state and subjugate Ukrainian people to Moscow's rule. And whereas thousands of people have been killed or wounded and millions have been displaced from their homes by the Russian Federation's war of aggression in Ukraine. Whereas on April 27th, 2022, the House of Commons declared unanimously that given the quote "clear and ample evidence of systemic and massive war crimes and crimes against humanity being committed against the people of Ukraine by the armed forces of the Russian Federation, directed by President Vladimir Putin and others within the Russian parliament", the House recognized that the Russian Federation is committing acts of genocide against the Ukrainian people. And whereas the Ukrainian people and Ukrainian armed forces courageously defending their country from the Russian Federation's aggression, whereas the people of Canada and people of Ottawa stand with Ukraine and support the Ukrainian people's right to statehood, independence, freedom and self-determination. Whereas since February 24th, 2022, the blue and yellow flag of Ukraine has flown outside Ottawa City Hall as a symbol of solidarity of the people and city of Ottawa with the Ukrainian people. Whereas millions of citizens of Ukraine have been forced from their homes by the Russian Federation, and over 100,000 of them have been welcomed in Canada as displaced persons, thousands of whom have settled here in Ottawa. Whereas the people of Canada and the people of Ottawa have responded with kindness, selflessness and generosity to the needs of humanitarian support for those affected by Russia's war. Therefore, be it resolved that on February 24th, 2023, the city of Ottawa and city council of Ottawa commemorate the first anniversary of the Russian Federation's invasion of Ukraine with a minute of silence honoring the memory of the victims of Russia's war against Ukraine. Be it further resolved that the city of Ottawa and city council of Ottawa resolutely condemn the aggression, crimes against humanity and acts of genocide committed by the Russian Federation. Be it further resolved that the city of Ottawa and city council of Ottawa reaffirm its complete solidarity with Ukraine, Ukrainian people and Ukrainian people's right to statehood, independence, freedom and self-determination. Be it further resolved that the city of Ottawa, the city council of Ottawa affirm they shall stand with Ukraine until all internationally recognized sovereign territory of Ukraine is liberated from Russia. Thank you.
Thank you, conseil plant. Okay, next one is from councillor Troster regarding International Women's Day, seconded by councillor Kavanaugh.
I mean, I can read the whole thing, but this is simply a motion to declare March 8 to be International Women's Day in the city of Ottawa. I don't think I need to read the resolve clauses. This is very similar to other motions, so this is just a notice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the notices of motion that I'm aware of, so we'll move to item 16, motion to introduce bylaws. councillor De Ruus?
Que le règlement énuméré à l'ordre de jour sous le titre motion portant présentation de règlement doit lecture- That the bylaw listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaw, three reading be read and passed.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Confirmation bylaw, councillor De Ruus?
Que le règlement suivant soit adapté- That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceeding at a council meeting of February 8, 2023.
The conseiller De Ruus is motion carried?
Thank you so much. Adopte?
Thank you. I understand there's one inquiry from councillor Troster.
Thank you so much. Just to context of that inquiry is that, of course, last weekend the city experienced extreme cold temperatures up to minus 42 degrees Celsius with a wind chill, and many councillors received conflicting information from staff in different departments on the communications and resources in place to keep residents safe. It's a priority for our offices that we have a clear response to these issues on the public record. So this is the inquiry. Would staff report back to Emergency Protective Services Committee and Community Services Committee on the detailed procedure for when an extreme weather event is forecasted, including severe cold and heat warnings specifically addressing public communications and coordination with Ottawa Public Health and Service Ottawa slash 311 operators? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Troster. Motion to adjourn, councillor De Ruus?
Que la délibération du conseil de 8 février 2023 soit- That proceedings of the city council meeting of February 8 be adjourned. Thank you so much. Adopte.
Okay, I gotta go run to the NAC to go protect some direct- Okay, I gotta go run to the NAC to go protect some drugs.
Good afternoon, everyone. Bonjour à tous. My name is Sebastian Tremblay and I will be your moderator. Je m'appelle Sebastien Tremblay et je serai l'animateur de ce point de presse. Available for questions from the media we have. Disponé pour répondre aux questions, nous accueillons: Mayor, le maire, Mark Sutcliffe, Wendy Stephenson, interim city manager, directrice municipale par intérim, Dawn Herwire, interim general manager for planning, real estate and economic development, directeur général par intérim de la direction générale de la planification de l'immobilier et du développement économique, Bivici, director, transportation planning, directrice de la planification des transports, and Philip Landry, director, traffic services, directeur service de la circulation. I would now invite each agency in alphabetical order to ask your questions. You may ask one question with one follow-up. Par ordre alphabétique, j'invite maintenant chaque organisme à poser une question et une question de suivi. When asking your questions, please identify who your question is directed to. And if you're in council chambers, please use the microphone. Lorsque vous posez vos questions, veillez à indiquer à qui s'adresse votre question. Et si vous êtes dans l'attissage du conseil, veillez à le faire au micro. We'll now start with Laura Glorati at CBC.
Hello. My first question is for Philippe Landry. So I'm wondering, can you give us a date of when feasibly we could see Wellington Street reopened?
In terms of a date, we don't have that yet. We're going to start working on that. There's some work that needs to be done in terms of getting the traffic signals reinstalled. We have to look at the bike lane, how that's going to be designed and then implemented. And then we also have to work with our emergency services partners, with police and fire and paramedics to ensure that once it does get reopened, everyone's comfortable with it.
So like any range or any?
Well, it'll be after March 1st for sure. But in terms of timelines, it's difficult to say. We will be updating council when we actually have a plan. I mean, we have to meet with my team to sort of lay out what the plan is and also work with, like I said, police and fire paramedics to develop that schedule. And once we have a confirmed timeline, we'll provide that to council.
Okay, my follow-up is for the mayor. So once we see the street reopened to car traffic, I understand that you're, the motion included this, that you'd like to see it closed temporarily for different special events. So can you kind of tell us how that is a departure from what was Wellington prior to the convoy protest? Like, how will it be different than how Wellington was before?
I think there's a couple of answers to that question. So first of all, in the short term, there's room for us to do some road closures during the summer, for example, and do some events on the street. And we're open to ideas around that and a productive discussion around that. And then obviously, in the long term, which is the real decision we have to make, I think there's a broader discussion about the future of Wellington Street and what it's going to look like, whether there will be vehicles on Wellington Street, whether there won't be, what kinds of, what the space could look like and what kinds of events could happen there in a more kind of permanent decision that we would be making afterwards.
Thank you. We will now go to Leah La Rock at CTV Ottawa. Leah, if you want to go to the mic? Yeah.
Sorry, I was just doing something for a noon show. This question for Mayor Sutcliffe. At some point today, we're expected the auditor general's report on the response from the Freedom Convoy. I know we don't know what it says just yet, but what are you hoping that we're going to gain from it? What are you hoping the city's going to learn from it and move forward from it?
I think there are a lot of lessons to be learned from what happened last year. And I think the city's already been working hard and the police service as well and the Police Services Board to implement important changes that will improve how we handle these events in the future. And so I'm looking forward to the auditor general's reports and we'll be reviewing them and moving as quickly as possible to adopt the recommendations that are appropriate and that will improve public safety.
Mr. Stephenson, is it possible to get your comment as the city manager on?
Oh, thanks, Leah. I would actually echo the mayor's remarks in terms of us looking forward to the report. We have made several changes and I'm going to say recommendations and changes in terms of our processes based on our own observations and lessons learned. And we absolutely look forward to receiving the report from the auditor general and having that discussion, not only at committee and council, but implementing those recommendations in the near future.
Is the city in better shape now than it was a year ago to handle events if it were to happen?
We've absolutely applied our lessons learned in terms of our processes. And I would say yes, and we've worked extremely closely with our partners as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. On va maintenant Charles-Antoine Gagnon avec le droit.
Charles-Antoine Gagnon, le droit. Hello, everyone. You're talking about revitalizing Wellington Street. When we're looking at that street close to Parliament. On one side, we have the parliament. On the other side, we have government buildings. They're not very attractive. When we're looking at other cities on the planet, they have a lot of green spaces. If we want to have a very attractive street, what can we do if we do not have any bars or restaurant on Wellington? What kind of negotiation bargaining will you have with the federal government, with the National Commission, NCC? This is exactly the question that we have right now. This is what we will have to discuss with the federal government. We want to have a vision for the future of Wellington Street. We have many ideas that we can take into account. And I hope that the end result will be a space that will be very attractive, a space that can be used by every Canadians and Ottawa residents. Today, it's only the first step. We're starting discussion with the federal government. Follow-up question. Are you going to close the street for the whole summer? Or will it be only temporary closing closures such as over the weekend? So what will you do? Answer? This is what we have to decide. I believe that the city of Ottawa team will take into account different ideas for festivals and other type of events. And any other opportunity to close this venue over the weekend when we have cyclists for also other type of activities. So right now, we're starting to discuss what can be done during the summer of 2023. Thank you so much. We'll give the floor to Frédéric Pepin, Radio Canada. My question is for Mr. Landry. I would like to have your answer in French. So when are you going to reopen Wellington Street? During the transportation committee meeting, you talked about three to four weeks after this meeting today. Are you going to follow the same timeline? Answer? Four to eight weeks is more for the lights. Also, we have to put all of the needed signs for the bike lane. We have to talk to our different partners, such as the Ottawa Police Service, Ottawa Fire Service and paramedic services. Because when we're going to be opening Wellington Street, we have to be ready to ensure the safety of everyone. We do not have a specific date right now because we have to meet all of our partners. There's a bit of planning to do. When we will have all of the information, we will present a suggestion to the council and decide about a date. Question? So it doesn't mean that you're going to be opening in four to eight weeks? Answer? The question was more for the signal, the light at the corner of Metcalf. So we have to talk to our different partners, with the police. We have to think about the bike lane with the flexible posts. Everything has to be in place before we open Wellington Street. Question? This is for the mayor. You're expecting a report from the auditor general. The question was asked in English. You're expecting this report this afternoon. Will you change some things after the recommendation, let's say, to the Ottawa Police Services? Answer? I'm anxious to read the auditor general's recommendations. I do believe that the city of Ottawa and Ottawa Police Services already put in place some changes to improve the service when we do have an event. This will be applicable in the future also. We saw good results during protests when we had the one-year anniversary of the Freedom Convoy. So yes, we did implement some changes. I do believe that the auditor general report will provide us with other recommendations that we can follow. I'm really anxious to receive them, read them and decide what we will do in the future. Thank you so much.
Do you mind saying your response to the first question in English? About the weeks, the timeline? Thank you.
So in terms of the reopening, at this point, we don't have a specific date. We have to do some work. So I had mentioned at committee a few weeks ago, it would take between four and eight weeks to get the traffic signals reinstalled. But we also have to work with auto police as per the motion that was approved today in terms of their timing, similar with paramedics and fire. We also have to design and implement a bike lane. So we just want to make sure that when we do and go out and install all that, it's all done in a coordinated matter. And so in terms of the exact date or time, that's difficult to say now. But as we get closer and we go through the plans, we will inform council in terms of that date. And that'll be, I'll talk to you.
All right, Olivia, you can get to the mic.
Um, yes, my question is for you, Mr. Mayor. In 2019, the city of Ottawa declared a climate emergency. What would you say to folks who feel... What would you say to folks who feel this motion to reopen Wellington Street to cars contradicts this?
I don't think it contradicts, I don't think it contradicts that declaration. I think that Wellington has the potential long-term to be a very attractive space that includes different forms of transportation. We are putting bike lanes in in the short term. I don't think it's going to change the amount of traffic that's flowing through the downtown core. And in fact, it may reduce the amount of traveling because I know I've heard from people that they're having to take, they're having to go way out of their way to get through the downtown core right now in their vehicles because Wellington's closed. So I don't know that it will automatically lead to more emissions or threats to the climate.
Thank you.
And this concludes today's media availability. Ceci conclut le Point de Presse d'aujourd'hui. Thank you, everyone. Merci à toutes. Have a wonderful Wednesday.